Well, welcome to tonight's hearing. We will go ahead and get started. Well, hello again and welcome to Kip Kansas City Public Hearing and Board Interview with the Missouri Charter Public School Commission. Thank you for joining us today as we hear from the school leadership and public about the renewal of Kip's contract. My name is Bailey Geist and I am the moderator of today's hearing and I am with the Missouri Charter Public School Association. So we'll begin the hearing with welcoming remarks followed with a brief presentation by Kip's leadership, then turn to hearing comments from the public. If you did not sign up to speak this evening but would like to provide comments, please feel free to place them in the chat or email to info@mcpsc.moe.gov. At 12:55, we will finish taking public comments, take a short break and resume with the board interview. And just please note for those who signed up, when is your opportunity to speak? I will call your name and then unmute your microphone or you can unmute yourself. And please try and keep it under two minutes so that we can give the opportunity for everyone to speak. And at this time, I will turn it over to Susan Cole, Chair of the Missouri Charter Public School Commission.
Thank you, Bailey. Afternoon, everybody. Thanks so much for attending this public hearing. It's being monitored, as you know, by the Missouri Charter Public School Commission. And we're anxious to hear all your comments. There are several commissioners from around the state that are listening in. I'm in St. Louis. Kathy Jo Loy is in Carthage. I think if Delbert Scott has called in, he's in Lower City. Peggy Taylor is in Nixa. Mary Jane Almodos is in Cape Girardeau. And it's possible that Alicia Kurtaba will also call in and she's in Kansas City. So we're scattered across the state, but we're able to hear you and we're interested in hearing what you have to say.
Susan Anton is with us, too.
Oh, good. Good, okay. Pastor Lee is here as well and he's in Kansas City. So, great. Didn't see you come on, thank you. We want to dedicate all the time that's allotted to hear your comments. So that's enough from us for now. And I'll ask Jana Cooper, who will continue with the work of this session. Jana, it's all yours.
Great, thank you so much. I'm so excited to be here. I am momentarily going to share my screen. Can... Some, thanks, Betsy. Bailey, are you going to let people in the chat or do you want me to do that? Or let people in? Or are you...
Oh, I'm taking care of that.
Okay, great.
Don't worry about that.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much. I'm really excited to be here today. My name is Jana Cooper. I'm the Executive Director here at Kip KC. I have been at Kip for seven years. And this is my third year as the Executive Director. When I started at Kip, we had, I was the middle school principal and we had 240 students in grades five through eight. I just want to thank MCPSA and Bailey for hosting today and helping us stay organized. I also want to thank the commissioners for all the support that they've given through our transfer process and for their time to listen and learn and hear more about Kip. And I especially want to thank Robin and Martha for answering the hundreds of texts and emails that I think Kevin and I, our Board Chair, have sent over the last few months. I especially want to thank our families, teachers, alumni and community members for taking time to be here today for this very important meeting. Your commitment to our school makes us who we are and I'm extremely grateful. I have a few brief remarks on who we are, our strengths, our areas of focus, and I'm going to talk a little bit about our high school. So let's jump in and talk about our mission and vision. Our mission and vision actually changed over our last, since our last charter renewal. This mission and vision was established through thousands of stakeholder interviews that the Kip Foundation held across the country. And the Kip KC Board of Directors ultimately adopted this mission and vision because it closely aligns to the work that we were already doing. And the words just call to attention what matters most to us. I'd like to highlight the most important shifts in this mission and vision. First, we're centering students as the key decision makers in their future. Second, we are naming that partnerships with the community and families is vital to our success. Third, we're clearly stating that college isn't the only great option after high school. And last, we recognize that every bit of work that we do has to ensure we build a more just world for our students and the communities that we serve. I want to briefly talk about enrollment. So you can see that our enrollment has increased each year. In 27, Kip was founded in 2007 with 50 fifth graders. In 2017, we founded our elementary school, which is why you see a big spike in enrollment in that year. And then in 2019, we started our pre-K. And this is the founding year of our high school with ninth graders. I also just want to talk a little bit about our waitlist. In 2018, we had 142 students on the waitlist. Last year, our waitlist jumped to 313. And then our current waitlist is at 196. I attribute the jump in our waitlist last year to the hard work that our teachers and leaders did to provide virtual instruction. It is one thing to get devices out to every single student and hotspots. It is also very tactical to get food out every single week and human dignity items and to learn how to teach virtually. But it is a whole other task to take on creating the community that we have established here at Kip and making sure that students feel seen and heard through a computer screen for 18 months. And our reputation spread quickly throughout the city and that's why we saw an increase to our waitlist throughout a pandemic, throughout the heart of the pandemic. I want to talk briefly about our demographics. So 100% of our students eat free breakfast, lunch and snack because we're enrolled in a community eligibility program. We serve 9% special education students, which is in line with the national norms and very comparative to Kansas City public schools. And we also get the opportunity to serve English language learners here at Kip. Our racial demographics have remained fairly steady over the years. When we started the elementary school in 2017, we did see an increase in our Hispanic and Latinx population. All right, I'd like to talk a little bit about our strengths. We view these as what we need to leverage in order to improve in our areas of focus. We also believe that these are vital to continuing to maintain as our strength. So these are not things that we are not still focusing on because they're a really important part of who we are and what we need to do to accomplish our goals. I'm going to start by talking about our strategic plan. A big part of what we did last year, not last year, but our last charter term was find a strategic planning partner and develop a strategic plan and then start to roll it out. That was also right when the pandemic hit. But the professional development that we underwent in creating the strategic plan and then starting to execute it was easily the best professional development our leadership team and myself had over the last five years. And that work is very present still today. Not only does it help us set our goals, but it holds us accountable to what we said that we were going to accomplish. Another thing that must continue into the next five years is our relationship with our alumni. And that department is called Kip Forward. We have 704 alumni that are attending over 50 high schools and 38 colleges. This team of three, led by India Williams, is changing our city. When students across the country had to leave their dorm rooms because of the pandemic, this is the team that got our kids home safely. They support students and families with food insecurity, FAFSA completion, ACT prep, and they help our Kipsters navigate the world beyond Kip KC. Additionally, this team provides programming to our kinder through ninth grade about college and careers. But probably what is most important and is our secret sauce is strong relationships. 85% of our families attend conferences each period. 94% of our families recommend Kip to family and friends. Our primary enrollment strategy is word of mouth that our parents and students tell their friends and family to come to Kip. And we haven't missed an enrollment target in the last five years. Our student retention data has remained at 92%. And up until the last year, our staff retention was also at 92%. It dropped this year to 85% coming in. Those numbers are not possible without intentionally focusing on relationships. Less from a data perspective and more anecdotally, as we all watched school boards and schools disagree with the community and sometimes parents about how to best handle the pandemic in schools. That was not our experience at Kip. Our community came together and we recognized that it was hard for everyone. Instead of finding ways to disagree, we found ways to lean on and appreciate each other. We've also done some incredible work around forming partnerships in order to gain better services for our students. We're part of a bus collaborative with three other charter schools. This allowed us to reduce the cost of transportation because we bought bus all over the city and also provide better services. We also are a part of the pre-K collaborative here. Our pre-K partner is United Inner City Services so that we can allow the experts to provide pre-K and utilize each other's strengths. One of our most significant partnerships is highlighted through our athletics. Athletics is a huge part of the identity here at Kip. And I don't know, for those of you that have never been here, we don't have a field and we also don't have a regulation gym. So, but we have one of the biggest athletic programs in the city and that was prior to having a high school because our athletic director has formed relationships with anyone and everyone in order for our kids to gain access to fields and being able to compete. When he wasn't able, when we weren't able to really have our middle schoolers compete, he started a league that is between charters and the districts in order for our middle schoolers to really be competitive with sports. And that is a combination of partnerships with the city and partnerships with schools. We know more than ever that we cannot do this work alone. The pandemic has highlighted that schools are not just centers for education, but provide a tremendous amount of other services. And we know that strong partnerships are critical to our success. And we have a strong track record of being able to find common ground in order to serve our students and families well. While some people like to shy away from things that need to get better, one of the very, very lovable traits about Kip KC is that we are transparent, humble and hungry when it comes to getting better results for our kids. While our scores continue to outperform Kansas City public schools, they are not good enough for the students and families that we serve. Robin and I have discussed this many times, but when we're up for renewal again next year in five years, we want to be eligible for a 10-year renewal because our academic track record suggests that there is confidence we can have a 10-year renewal. We want the next five years to be marked with continued improvement to academic outcomes. We are, the goals that we have set in our performance contract are focused around moving students out of the bottom and moving students into the top. We are interested in the long game, meaning we intend to focus on all students growing, not just some. The pandemic can, the impact of the pandemic can obviously not be ignored. We are currently experiencing some setbacks in both our instruction and our culture. Since starting school in August, we have made adjustments to the daily schedule, changed teacher and staff member roles and created a new set of goals that are focused on meeting student need. Last, I just want to talk a little bit about our high school. It was founded this year. And before deciding to start the high school, the board took very seriously lots of factors into consideration. One of those was a landscape analysis and looking at enrollment patterns across the city. It was also looking deeply at where do students live and where are the students located. Because of the data that our Kip Forward team has always tracked on our alumni, we also saw a considerable amount of increase in students transferring outside of the boundaries of Kansas City public schools. So part of the strategic planning process was to create a green lighting criteria to let us know when we were ready to start the process of beginning the high school. We held ourselves accountable to meeting the goals in the green lighting criteria, which for us meant we were ready to begin that process, even though our families and our teachers and our students have known for a very long time that starting the high school was what they wanted and needed. Additionally, there's a tremendous amount of data that the Kip Foundation tracks that shows the difference between school networks that have a high school and school networks that do not have a high school. And you can see that not only are graduation rates increased, but actually the outcomes for what our eighth graders are able to do when there is a Kip High School in place. Currently, this is a picture of what the future Kip High School currently, it's located here in our building at 18th and Prospect. We have 105 freshmen on this campus. Currently, 75% of our students are on track to matriculate to their sophomore year. Our founding high school principal, Josh Swartzlander, has been at Kip for 12 years and he successfully completed the Fisher Fellowship with the Kip Foundation. I sincerely appreciate your time today and I look forward to growing our relationship over the next four years. And Bailey, I'm all done with my part.
Great, thank you so much. Very well done. There's no comments on behalf of the commission. We will move on to tonight, today. You say tonight could usually be this then. Today's public comment portion. So again, just a few reminders. I will call your name and then unmute you or you unmute yourself. Then just try and keep it under two minutes. So with that being said, we will begin with Brianna McMillan.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brianna McMillan. I'm a part of our founding class of '07. So one of the first Kip graduates as we built five through eight. Graduated in '11. Attended Bishop Ward High School. Graduated from there in 2015. And then just graduated a couple of years ago from Briar Cliff University in Sioux City, Iowa, class of 2019. So for me, being the first one to and through now known as Kip Forward, really took a big lead on how I got to where I was going. Coming from the inner city, about 15 blocks away from where we're located, it was definitely a push to be better than my circumstances and really, you know, give me a chance to be more than the things that I seen. So to me, Kip really means an opportunity, not just for myself. I've had a lot of my siblings and cousins come through this school. So with that being said, just extended throughout families, throughout the community and just really, as Jenna said earlier, building relationships to keep such pride put into this school. I feel like without this school, I wouldn't be where I'm at. I know that that's kind of cliche, but I mean, just the push from teachers supporting the check-ins really just holding me accountable, whether that was in high school, middle school, all the way up until now, where I am back as our behavior specialist and, you know, doing the work that it once took to get me where I am right now. So dealing with some of our most challenging kids and really loving on them, loving on their families, getting to know them so that they can feel supported in the building that they do get to come to. So for me, Kip, if I use one word, Swartz kind of stemmed from it, it would be legacy. I always say I'm a living legacy to this school. And the more that I do and the more that I grind, the more students that will want to come back. So for me, seeing more alumni come back in and start to give back to the same place that we started at is just, I mean, it's a great thing to see, but it doesn't stop with me and it doesn't stop with just those alumni as well. So to be a part of this is a blessing. And I always say that I feel like the toughest battles goes to the strongest soldiers. So for me, it has not been easy, but I pushed through. And I believe that if it's not for me, my staff or my family, I do for the students I serve. So with that, I thank you all for your time and listening to what I just said.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Miriam Rosales.
Good afternoon. My name is Miriam Rosales. I attended Kip for the seventh and eighth grade year. And then after Kip, I attended Lincoln College Preparatory Academy where I graduated in 2019. I am currently at College of St. Mary pursuing a bachelor's degree in applied psych and human services with a minor in Spanish. Volunteering at Kip during their parent teacher conferences made me realize of the importance of interpreters and inspired me to work towards my medical interpretation certificate, which I am also currently doing. And I know that improving my interpretation skills will have a great impact on my Spanish-speaking clients when I do become a medical case manager. Kip means a lot to me because their family. From the moment I started my journey at Kip to this very precise moment, the staff at Kip has continued to support me and push me to do my very best. Kip is needed in our communities because it provides students with a sense of hope. Hope that anything is possible. Take me, for example, as a first-generation college student. I didn't think college would be possible for me. Now, I'm one year away from being the first person in my family to obtain a bachelor's degree and potentially a master's degree. I view my college decision as one of the best I have ever made. I think it's important for me to acknowledge the impact Kip and people such as Ms. Jessica, Ms. Adams, Ms. Hayes, Mr. Swartzdiner and so many have made on ensuring that I made it to the point in my academic career that I am today. Kip has been there for me every step of the way and I know I wouldn't be here today without the resources and support Kip has provided me with. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Demond Piggy.
Good afternoon. My name is Demond Piggy. I'm owner of Golden Gate Funeral Home that sits just across the street east of Kip. My original connection with Kip was when my daughter played for Mr. Cobbins, Coach Cobbins, in Little League basketball. And it was four or five years ago. And, you know, just talking to him and his enthusiasm about the program and, you know, what he envisioned for Kip as a whole, it was just very motivating for, you know, all of the community leaders and everything, just to, you know, want to support something like it. And then a couple of years ago, I was invited in and got an actual tour with Mr. Dayton and Coach Cobbins as well. And that's when I got to see things from an academic side. And it changed my perception even more because, you know, with enrollment being down in the public schools and, you know, just all the things that you hear, you know, you would think there was a disconnect between students and teachers. And that's not the vibe that I got at Kip. I mean, all the teachers were motivating, motivating the students. The students were excited in the morning and it seems as if they look forward to coming to the school and everything. And that's what we need, you know, just the connection, the family environment. And I was very impressed with the wall that they have that, you know, tracks the students' progress, what schools, what high schools they go to, what colleges they go to and everything. And, you know, I grew up in the community about a half a mile away from Kip and it's just exciting to have a program like this in our city that continues to motivate and, you know, encourage our kids. So I'm going to be a full supporter going forward with Kip and I just hope that you guys just continue to support their program and their vision as they continue to grow.
Thank you. Now we have...
Bailey, Bailey, can I interrupt a second? Did you, did you forget Derek Arrington?
He is in replace of, I think it was...
Okay. He's on the call. He is on the call, Bailey.
Okay, so you, okay, I'll let him to the lesson. Sorry about that.
Okay.
All right. Well, now we will hear from Fazeon Campbell.
How are y'all doing today? My name is Fazeon Campbell. I am an alumni in the class of 2020. I graduated, advanced from Kip in 2014, I believe. And I graduated from, or 2016, excuse me. And I graduated from Cristo Ray High School in 2020. So half of my year was cut short due to the pandemic, but we made it through. So I'm currently attending Rockhurst right now as a sophomore. I am studying, right now I'm undecided, but I am leaning towards Health Administration. And I just, some, I just want to provide anecdotal experience. The one thing, one memory that I do have that I'm very fond of was in seventh grade with Ms. Hayes. If you're in the call, can you say hi real quick? Oh, she's not?
No, I am. Hello, sorry, I've been crying.
Sorry. So we had an advisory period. So instead, so we had gym one day and then advisory the next day. Self-advocacy was the thing that she, was a memory that I have. So self-advocacy means speaking up for yourself and your interests. That, that impact, that, those words have still impacted me to this day. When I was, when I have been at my lowest, I have always depended on my ability to be resilient. And I feel that if you want, if you want children to succeed, they need to have the ability to be resilient. And I appreciate Kip so much for instilling that in me. And yeah, thank you guys for your time today.
Thank you. Now we will hear from John Calafatus.
Hi, I'm John Calafatus. It's a tough one to pronounce, Calafatus. From Kip's National Organization, the Kip Foundation. So I'm a senior relationship manager there, which means I'm the point person for seven Kip regions around the country, including both in Missouri, St. Louis and Kansas City. And yes, Kansas City has the best barbecue. I've worked at Kip for 10 years, six in this role. So I've worked with Jana and Kip Kansas City for six years. So I just wanted to convey the Kip Foundation enthusiastically supports this charter renewal. And so why are we confident in Kip Kansas City? I just point out three key strengths. One is leadership. And Jana, Jana Cooper is the right ED for Kip Kansas City. She brings that, you know, deep instructional background, really stable leadership and high integrity that the Kip Organization in Kansas City needs to deliver the outcomes and the equity and the sustainability that we all hope for. And those characteristics extend to the rest of her team. The second strength I point out is governance. This board has a nice, strong mix of finance, legal, education, community leaders who bring both that fiduciary oversight, but also view student outcomes as our North Star. And then the last strike I point out is K-12 program with the high school opening this year, as Jana talked about. Kip Kansas City is successfully building out that K-12 program, elementary, middle and high. That is the ideal Kip model and that we know best drives both short and long-term outcomes. So we're excited about Kip Kansas City's future and encourage you to renew the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Trent Myers.
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Trent Myers and I'm a senior at Rockhurst High School now. I went to Kip four years ago. Yeah, I left in the grade. Yeah, so I'm gonna give a quick backstory and I'm gonna say how it all ties back in. I was 12, the summer before I started Kip, my mother passed. And then it brought me into a dark place. Kip noticed that place and then they refused to let me live there. So Kip seeing the light in me when I didn't see it in myself and they was committed to pulling me out of a place I didn't want to be in. For that, I'm forever be grateful. Kip, it helped me for myself, like it helped me learn who I am and taught me the ways to live. Like things, I always said... Like, things, I always said, find a way, find a way or make one. Whenever I want to do something, that was something I need to get done. That's what I, that's always what I go back to, man. So I'm always grounded in KIP. And KIP deserved a renewal because there's definitely kids out there like me in the city and in the world who deserve the opportunities that I got because, and I believe wholeheartedly that they could do the same for them or even better things for them too. So thank you. Now Trent.
Thank you. Now we have Nathan Hayward.
Yeah, so I partner with KIP. I'm a therapist for Truman, and so we have a partnership where able to do, see clients in KIP during the day at school. I think what I've noticed is it gives us a unique opportunity to see kids who otherwise might not be seen for therapy or get therapy services. And so a couple of highlights just recently is there's been kids that when we started working with them, one in particular had really aggressive behaviors to the point of tearing up classrooms, violence towards teachers and staff and even violence at home. And through just therapy and then work with a couple of teachers and like special education department and stuff, we figured out that exercise was a really important coping skill for him. And now he's doing extremely well and he, he exercises constantly. But it, I mean, he's, he's functioning extremely well in school. He's, he's, honestly, I don't ever get a call about him anymore or any crises calls. So, I mean, there's a bunch of other stories I could share as well. But I mean, there's so many kids like that, that maybe started in places where it didn't look like things were going well, and now they're performing in ways that I don't think a lot of people may have thought or may have believed in them, but KIP had stuck with them. I think that's, especially in the area we serve, I think that's very cool. So thank you for letting me share.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have Katrina Garcia, and I believe Mayra Benkoma is translating for.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Karina Garcia. Y soy madre, mi conexión con KIP, soy madre de tres alumnos. Una alumna está en el Elementar School y en los otros dos alumnos en la Mirel School. Y también tengo una exalumna de KIP.
Hi, everyone. My name is Karina Garcia. My relationship to KIP is I have three KIPsters. I have one still in the elementary school and two in the middle school. I also have a student that no longer attends KIP, but she was at KIP for elementary and middle school.